District 721 to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Five, of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Margaret, please note everyone is present except Tammy. First on our agenda today, we have a special presentation.
Good evening, School Board and Superintendent Dipburner. We do have two special student athletes with us tonight, and it is the summer, however, the first young lady that we're going to introduce, Kenzie Neisen, her sport really didn't get over until after the school year was out. So we have in front of us not only the 2014 state 3A girls golf champion, but also the two-time state girls golf champion. And Kenzie was in the eighth grade and as a sophomore finished second, and then as a freshman finished fourth, so placed in the top four for five consecutive years for New Prague for girls golf. And we are very happy to have her with us tonight. She will be attending Oklahoma State next fall and reporting on August 18th for human health sciences major. And we're very happy to have her here tonight, and I did ask her to just say a few words about her time. She's a senior, of course, graduating her time at New Prague, both athletically and academically. Kenzie?
Thank you. I'd just like to say, growing up in New Prague, it's been a great experience, both academically and with athletics. I've grown up with great coaches, and I've also had great teammates throughout my journey here at New Prague High School. And teachers have also been really great with golf, because we miss a lot of school for it. So they've been very flexible with that and very supportive throughout my years in New Prague High School.
Mr. Dipburner?
Yes, and one thing that should be mentioned, too, is that this past year, her performance at the state, I think you shot nine under, which is a state high school league record. So besides winning the state championship this year, she set a state record, and she also tied for the state record the year before. Am I right?
Yep.
Kenzie? So we're a great, great student athlete in the classroom and then obviously in the chorus, and we want to wish you the best at Oklahoma State. We're very proud of the accomplishments you, you know, you've achieved here, and we know you're going to be very successful in the future.
Yeah.
Open up.
Kenzie, I've been watching you golf since you started golfing, because I live on the golf course, and you could hit better than me when you were probably five, you and your sister both. So it's been, it's kind of fun to watch your parents out there with you, like from when you were really little, the whole way up, and they were out there a lot. It really says a lot about how supportive your parents are, too. So I'd like to congratulate them also.
Thank you.
Yes, I want to follow up on that. My wife and I started golfing about eight years ago, and we'd see these two little girls on the golf course, and we thought those clubs were twice the size you guys were. But you've really grown, grown up, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And our second student athlete tonight is Griffin Periant. Griffin will be a junior next year. And over the winter time, during the state wrestling tournament, Griffin was our one and only state champion for the New Prague area wrestling team. As an eighth grader, Griffin placed second. As a ninth grader, he placed third. And as a 10th grader, he was a state champion, and we are very happy and proud to have Griffin with us tonight. I asked him what, what he was kind of up to this summer, or what his goals were, and he has already qualified for a national freestyle tournament in Fargo, North Dakota in July. So wrestling is not just a winter sport anymore, it is year-round. And I did ask Griffin to just say a few words and, and kind of some of the highlights of what a state wrestling tournament really was like.
Well, yeah, it was a good time, because it kind of indicated all the hard work that's been put in. Wrestling pretty much every day for past five, six, seven years, so just helped show that hard work paid off. That's about it.
Thank you very much, Griffin. Mr. Dipburner?
Yeah, I remember Griffin being a student at middle school, and the one thing I remember, when he talked about taking second place in state in eighth grade, he is about one of the most humble kids there are. Yeah, I mean, you would never, he doesn't carry himself like he's anything special. He's just a good kid and a very hard worker, like he says, and very dedicated. But besides being skilled, all that hard work and dedication is paying off, and, and we're looking forward to him for his junior year here and seeing what he does. But it's been, it's been a great accomplishment by Griffin, so congratulations.
Griffin, you're another one that I've watched over the years, both you and your brother, because you've been in the paper since you were probably in fourth grade placing in all those wrestling tournaments. So another familiar name and another testament to your parents also for the time they put in to help you guys go to all your tournaments.
And you're a great role model to other kids, and especially to a couple of pumper kids that are going to be coming down the line, too. So a couple of grandkids, congratulations.
Congratulations, and we look forward to two more years.
Thanks.
Watching you.
I think we lose track of, or we don't appreciate how hard the work is in wrestling. I remember when I used to teach in the wintertime, the wrestlers are just, well, some of them looked like zombies. It was so hard work and losing the weight and everything. And a good friend of mine says you can tell how hard wrestling is when the wrestlers are running around the gym during practice. They sneak up a layup once in a while, and the basketball is free. But you never see the basketball players going up and sneaking down a leg takedown or anything. Congratulations, good luck next year.
At this time, Board, if you would want to come out in front of the circle, and we'll have Kenzie and Griffin come through and congratulate them.
Take a headshot there, please.
Didn't know he was going to get his picture taken.
Next, we'd like to go ahead and approve the agenda. I'd just like to make a note that we're going to enter into a closed session right after the approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. We are going to be, I'd like to take a motion for it to enter into a closed session. We are going to be meeting with Jay Squires, our school attorney, under statute 13D.05, exception to the open meeting law, and we're going to be discussing pending litigation and settlement options for the window arbitration.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-zero, entering into closed session at 6:38. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting reopens at 6:52. First on the agenda is approving the minutes from the May 27th meeting.
Approve or consent agenda for the whole thing, right?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Reports. Policy Committee?
Yes, we're going to reconvene in September.
Southwest Metro.
We're on summer hiatus at this time. Our next meeting will be in August.
Community Ed, Don?
We had a meeting last Thursday. It was June 12th, and we discussed summer kids company. The registrations are very good. There have been some grants that we have received for different activities, summer classes. And then we also talked about selling advertising on the, on the brochure that goes out with all the offerings. Sherry, anything you can add to that?
Just the deadline, if anything wanted to be submitted in the brochure? Because July?
What's K?
Know what it is off the top of your head?
Let's see. July 1st, or, yeah, July 1st.
Thanks. Next, we have our superintendent report.
Yeah, well, just, just to give you an update right now with the stadium. Get a lot of questions about that. With all the rain that we've been receiving, it's been, right now, the crews are basically about three weeks behind schedule. August 1st was the, you know, the date that they thought they could finish the stadium, and it got pushed back two weeks. Craig Most, our buildings grounds director, met with Cobalt Construction, they're our general contractor, and at that time, they were two weeks behind, they were going to start working on Saturdays. Probably shortly thereafter, it's been raining ever since you had that meeting, and now we're pushing three weeks behind. And I asked Craig, why don't you just say a few words on the stadium about some of the things that they'll be doing?
That is correct. They are about three weeks behind. I talked to the general contractor today, and he indicated to us that they are three weeks plus behind them. Three weeks plus, I don't know what that means, but it must mean they're more than three weeks behind. What they're waiting on right now, and the reason they really can't do, they haven't worked for a week. They were out there today trying to dry it up and push some dirt around, trying to get the pools of water out. But what they're trying to do now is that drainage system, and that's the outer ring of the track, that's the collector pipe that they want to, they have to put in, and then they want to do the inner ring of that track area and that collector pipe as well. And we have to have dry weather to do it. They need two to four days to get it in, and they need about three days of good drying weather to get this thing dried out enough to put it in, so that they can take that big pile of sand out there and cover that up. Once they cover that up, that, that collector pipes, those collector pipes will take that water away from that stadium. And then we will be able to continue the work somewhat dry without the mud. The big concern we have right now, and the contractors are aware, and we've discussed all this, is compaction rates in that soil under the track. And with all the moisture that's in there, we cannot push sand on standing water. And we have to redo soil borings and tests and all this other stuff to make sure that compaction rate of that soil is, is, meets the requirement the architects have set. So that's what they're waiting for now. They're going to increase their crew size as soon as we get some decent weather here. They're going to double the crew size to make an attempt to get this done. As Tim said, they're going to work Saturdays, they're going to be working 12-hour days. They're going to do everything they can do to do this, but it's, it's, the rain is just, we, really, nothing has happened there for over two weeks. So that's where we're at.
And our first game scheduled for the new stadium is a soccer doubleheader on August 21st.
And as we move forward, we will, we will talk. Brad Skogarbo is with, he's at every meeting. Every week, we meet with the contractors, and he's, he's, he's right there next to me, and we're in contact with him a lot, so.
Okay.
Aside that, everything's going great.
They're responsible for checking the compaction rate, the contractors are?
We actually contract Brown InterTech for that ourselves through the school, but it's managed through World Architects.
So it's, there's something in the contract that says it has to be at this level before?
Correct, absolutely. Yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. Just good news. First off, I want to, with our graduation, our 2014 graduation, I think, went very well. I want to thank the school board for their involvement, especially a big thanks to Lonny Seifert, our high school principal, who made some changes, and it was a great district celebration. We had a lot of positive comments about the teachers, you know, being involved in the ceremony, and just, it was a first-class event, and thought that went very well. And then our district last day celebration with our entire staff went very good. Tony Boothy is in charge of that, and every day, we had a district celebration this year went very well. We got a lot of positive feedback from staff, and I just want to thank our school board again. Having all seven school board members there, I think, sends a message to our staff that what they do is important, and they are appreciated. So your commitment, your support to our entire staff, teachers, administrators, food service workers, transportation, doesn't matter, everyone involved, I know it's appreciated. So thank you very much.
I like the happy video, too.
Happy video is going viral.
Someone put it out on Facebook or YouTube or somewhere.
Yes, it's going viral right now as we're speaking. Yeah, that was interesting. So that's all I got.
Right. Let's move on to our action items. First on our list is the demographic report.
Yep, and we'll have Hazel Reinhardt come up, and I'm what, she will be, present our demographic projections and analysis for our school district. This is our first step in our facility plan, our facility study plan, is to have Hazel share with us these projections. So Hazel, it's all yours.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, School Board Superintendent, it's always a pleasure to be at a school board meeting and to present results of a study like this. Now, I have to caution you, maybe you need to give me a time limit, because I have more enthusiasm for this than most other people have. So just want to be mindful of that. What I will do tonight is give you a little recap of where you've been, and then where I see the factors that are suggesting where you will be. You had really pretty significant enrollment increases in the past 10 years, 753 students, 24%, which is a very rapidly growing school district. In this past year, 2013, 14, just shy of 14% of your students were non-residents, and that's a pretty high percentage for a school district. And open enrollment into the district has increased over the decade. On the other hand, you have about 13% of your resident students are in non-public settings. And there's some evidence that that has decreased in time. Talk a little bit about the projection overall summary. I've made projections via two methodologies. The cohort survival is, is a traditional way of projecting enrollment and population, has a lot of strengths, it has a couple of weaknesses. But what those projections show us is that your total enrollment will decrease after 2016, 17, due to lower births. And births in the United States, in Minnesota, in this area, have really declined after a peak in 2007 as part of the recession, and they have not recovered yet. So that means that K-5 is projected as going down in the next five years due to those lower number of births, and is likely to remain depressed throughout the projection period, unless you have more rapid residential development, or unless you have a lot more open enrollment flowing in. But remember, you know, at this point, nobody in those cohorts had more kids. I mean, so it's not like you can import them from somewhere else, because everyone is shy of children there. Now, the other possibility here that I weighed a great deal is how fast to assume the rebound of population growth in Scott County would be, because it was a very rapidly growing county's growth then slowed, and, you know, just, so that could affect those last five years of the projection, projection, you know, 2019, as we go into those last five years. So keep that in mind. Middle school will increase in the next five years, and then in the second five projection years, it, it will decrease, because those smaller elementary grades will age into the middle school. High school enrollment is projected to increase throughout the projection period, and open enrollment could increase. I know that you're planning to take some steps to try to entice a few more non-district residents into the New Prague public schools, but I don't know, you know, how many students that will be. Now, the projected additional housing units are likely to ameliorate some of this effect of the lower births. Now, I have to tell you that the projections I made, I made, because no local official was willing to venture anything. And so I looked at what happened in the last three years, and I assumed that the district would have 35 additional single-family detached units every year for the next five years. But that's me, not anybody else saying that. And then I can show you the impact of what that would, would be if that happens. And your current K-5 student yields from new single-family units, the yields are very high, I mean, very, very high. And now, I have to caution you that the yields are likely to be lower in the future, once people who have experienced this lower number of births move into units, that it, it's likely to go, go down a bit. Let's take a look here. This is your total enrollment, and you can see the pretty dramatic increase over the period of time. If we look at your resident enrollment, residents in the district, we will see that growth is, is more modest, and we can also see that, it's kind of interesting, it, it seems to move for a couple of years, then it plateaus for two, three years, then it moves again a little bit. But basically, you know, you haven't had much in the way of resident enrollment increase in the past three years. Look at the components of change here, which is, demographers like to do that, but you can see, as we look at the columns to the left of the table, that the large numbers of year-over-year increase were early in the 10-year period, and they've been far more modest in the last couple of years. Natural increase/decrease, we're looking at the difference here between the size of the incoming kindergarten class versus the previous year's grade 12. It's really remarkable that your numbers are positive, because you have a flow, inflow of students at the sixth grade and again at the ninth grade, so that you, your kindergarten outpaced it is, is very interesting. I know when I did some work here, I suppose maybe 10 years ago already, that was not the case. So this is something new. And then the net migration, this number, I can't tell you whether these students actually moved into the district, or whether they're simply the non-public students coming into the public schools or the open enrollment. But again, you'll see that the large numbers were earlier, and it's been more modest more recently. If we look at education choices in Minnesota, and that's one of the things that makes Minnesota interesting compared to other states, is that we have so many choices here, and so many of them funded public, with public dollars. But we're looking here at the New Prague public schools and Minnesota as a whole, these numbers are for 2011, 12, the state, for some reason, can't seem to get their numbers updated. But you can see in non-public settings, a higher percentage of your district residents are in non-public settings, meaning traditional non-public schools or home schools than statewide. As far as open enrollment goes, 6.4% of students open enrolled in statewide. Your, for 2011, 12, it was 13.6% in and 6.4% out. So it's, open enrollment is a, is a, a big factor in this district. Charter schools, you have almost no students in charter schools here. And then I look at this, of, of all the school age population, all the students who would be available, you capture 80.6% of your residents in the, and that's a higher percentage than statewide. And that's kind of remarkable, because you do have this pretty large non-public. I wanted to call your attention to the numbers here on open enrollment, the open enrollment in. You can again see that basically in the last three years, that number has been pretty flat. And so one of the questions always is, because this has driven increase in enrollment, at what point does that sort of level out, and you, and you can't get any more growth out of it? Here is your enrollment for 10 years by grade. What I look at here, a couple of things. One is I look on the horizontal, or the row of kindergarten, to see what has happened over time, and you will notice that kindergarten has been, this again is total enrollment, really substantially larger in, in the period than it was when it started out. On the other hand, which is not uncommon, the numbers do fluctuate from year to year. So you can't say, well, it certainly trended up, but it's no smooth trend line. And then the other thing that I look at is I look at the row, I'm, no, the column of 2013, 14, and look at the size of the various grades vis-à-vis each other. And these are actually fairly equal in size. And I average those, simple average, K-5, you have 290 students, 6'8", 302, and 912, 301. This suggests to me, this distribution, that your enrollment will be flat, or even decrease potentially, if kindergarten remains near its current level, that we're not seeing enough lift in there. If, there's no internal momentum occurring, so it all has to occur in the external. You have to either more residential development, more open enrollment, that kind of thing. Now, as we start to put ourselves in the mindset of making projections, we want to look at what's happened to births. There is a correlation between the number of children born and the size of the kindergarten class five to six years later. Now, sometimes that relationship is not as, as strong or as consistent as we might like it. But I would call your attention to the following here. For the number of years shown here, 2007 was a peak birth year in Minnesota. 2007, these are calendar years here, 2007 was the largest birth year in Minnesota and the nation since 1964. However, these numbers are substantially lower than what they were in 1964. You'll see for Scott County, we've had a huge increase in births over time, but you'll see how, as we get into the last four or five years since the, the Great Recession, it has really moved about. And then for the city of New Prague, the largest number there was, well, 141, 140, 142, and now it has, well, I can know 155, now it's down to 127. So it's fluctuated here in the last years. And then the Minnesota Department of Health will provide births by address. And so these are the births by address coded to addresses in your school district, so we know that these are district residents. Now, the caveat here is that out-of-wedlock births, parents can request that these births not be made public, which, the by address. I would say, looking at these numbers, I don't think there's been any change in your trend here. I've seen some districts where I think there has been. But if we look at this, you can see sort of the story of the future here, that we're looking at a high point of 260, and it's fallen to 198. As we think about the future, a couple of things to remember, that decade that is stretching in front of us, and the one that will follow, really represent a very different period of time, a very different era than what we have just recently experienced. And the biggest change of all, of course, is the aging of the population. And that aging is driven by the aging of baby boomers. But correlated with an aging population is less mobility. People move most frequently when they are younger. In fact, we are most likely to change our address each year between the ages of 18 and about 34, and after that, it decreases very, very quickly. So the older the population is, the less movement we're going to have. That will result in a decrease in school age population per household. The practical significance of that is it'll probably increase transportation costs, because you will have to travel further between households with. because you will have to travel further between households with kids. And as many parents have already learned, it's the reason we have playdates and the like, is that many neighborhoods don't have the density of children and so you have to drive your kids around to see their friends. We're also going to have a shift in the size of adult age groups. We're going to have not as much increase in the younger age groups in this decade. Sixty percent of the increase in the adult population will occur in the population over the age of sixty. And that population is housed, and so there's some people who are speculating that there will be less demand for single-family detached housing in this coming decade. Now, we've seen these low births in the last few years. I want to assure you, there is every reason to believe there will be more births this decade and into the next because the large Gen Y or millennial population will enter their prime childbearing years and simply will have more births, especially, I think, after two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, which affects maybe beyond the professional or work life of some of you, or certainly beyond what you want to be concerned about today. But, but my point is, it will come back. And with that will come another enrollment cycle of rising elementary enrollment and then another large graduating class sometime in the two thousand and forties. We had the largest graduating class of high school seniors in nineteen seventy-eight in Minnesota, the peak of the baby boom that has not been surpassed. Statewide, the second one came in two thousand and nine, just immediately. And then, we would expect another one in the two thousand and forties. Now, talk a little bit about the methodologies. The cohort survival method, its great advantage is that I can make projections by grade. It reflects recent births and current size of grades, but it's very difficult to calibrate the survival rates to fit and adequately reflect additional housing units. So, if you expect rapid growth, then this, this method will likely under-project, which will have happening. So, the first task at hand is to project kindergarten. So, we want to look at what has happened in the past. So, you see here in the left columns, the district pool, which was the number of district births that we saw earlier. And then, I look at your kindergarten as a percentage of those births. And what these percentages tell me is that as time has gone on, a higher percentage of your kindergarten class is born in the district. That see, in the kindergarten class of two thousand and four, five, a huge proportion were not born in the district. But now, as we're coming down to these last years, hundred thirteen, hundred fifteen, hundred seven percent, so that we're getting closer to, to population being a little more self-contained here. I try, I average these trying to get rid of, because again, you see there's fluctuation from year to year. And even if I focus on the last few years, I still get a lot of fluctuation. And so, what I've looked at here is I've averaged the past two years, I've averaged the past three years, and I, one comes out to a hundred and eleven point one percent, and I think one was a hundred and eleven point three percent. And then, to try and reflect something that would be a little more robust, I've taken the hundred fifteen point three and applied that through time. And that, I don't, I don't think what's happening, you can expect to have like a hundred and thirty percent sustain itself for ten years. You might get a year when it's like that, but not over, over the long term. So, I'm going to project kindergarten based on these percentages. And then, I'm looking for the projections, looking at the projections of Scott County made by the State Demographics Center. And those births were really over-projected, actual births of coming in at about thirty-one percent below that. And New Prague district births are about nine percent of Scott County births. And I've adjusted these all so that they're that September first to August thirty-first for the school year. Now, again, this is a place where one could make another assumption and still have it be reasonable. And that is that rather than have those last five years be at minus thirty-one percent of the projection, you might take it at minus twenty-six or twenty-five, twenty-seven or somewhere in there, and you would get more lift. However, it would look like a hockey stick. And anytime you say, oh, it's going to be like this, and then it's going to go like this, it'll say, what, you know, what were you thinking about? So, I have now taken here the kindergarten projections, and the kindergarten projections through two thousand eighteen, nineteen are based on your actual births. So, at a hundred and eleven percent, we're looking at total kindergarten here of two hundred and seventy-eight in this past year. And with the low assumption, I come into two hundred fourteen, fifteen at either two eighty-nine or three hundred, or somewhere between. And you can see then, we're riding down that decline in births to two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and then moving up again. Now, the sum of these ten years is less than the sum of the past ten years. So, we'd need a lot of development to, to put back something that looked like the previous ten years. But I talked to Sandy and I think she told me that thus far for two thousand and fourteen, it's like two eighty-three or something.
Yeah, we're at two eighty-three right now.
So, I mean, it looks like these are, you know, looking reasonable at this point. So, now, let's go on and look at what's, what's happening in, in the net migration. Well, I'll double back and say kindergarten projections are, these assumptions are absolutely critical because these students will be in the system for thirteen years. And so, you know, if you under-project or you over-project this, it just drives, drives it through the system. Okay, we talked about this issue of students who are there, are new to the New Prague Public Schools. We don't know here, but via this methodology, whether they actually moved into the district or they're moving from non-public to public or open-enrolling. Couple of things that are, are interesting here about your district and your public schools is that normally, districts with rapid growth have a much higher number of net in-migration K-5. And you see, you started out with, with, well, at least in five, from two thousand five, fall of two thousand and five, six to fall of two thousand and six, seven, that's what those abbreviations are. You had ninety-five students there, but you see that has tailed off in the last couple of years. It's, it's basically flat. At six to eight, you can see again, early on, you had more students now flat. And high school is always difficult, but I told you that you have an inflow of students. And here, we look at each grade. Traditionally in Minnesota, before all-day kindergarten, schools had, public schools had a net inflow between kindergarten and grade one. And we look here, and that's really not been a characteristic of this district. We see more students, if we look over time, really flowing from grade one to grade two, that's where some large numbers, then the numbers gets, but basically positive. But you notice that from five to six, you have a consistent kind of inflow with just a couple of years, looking now as we come out in time, maybe around ten, seven, ten. And then, at from eight to nine, but again, look at how that number has decreased. That, and that fits with, I didn't put it in this presentation, but the number of students enrolled in traditional non-public schools has declined in this district. So, there are fewer students to graduate out of the sixth or eighth grade out of those non-public schools to flow in. So, and, and we see that in these numbers. And then, these are converted to survival rates, and a survival rate really combines the, the probability of death versus, and, and moving. And with school-age children, death is, is, has a very low probability. So, here, anything that is one point zero above is, is a positive. Anything that's below one, it means that you're taking out students. I've used the past three years as the low and the past five as the high here. And you, where I'd call your attention, especially if you look at from eight to nine, in the low one, you basically have an increase of eight, eight point seven percent, and at the high, it's at eleven point nine. A lot of the others are very similar. And then, in the cohort survival projection, what we're doing here is marrying those kindergarten assumptions with those migration assumptions. And in the case of this district and the assumptions made, migration plays a slightly bigger role than the kindergarten assumptions, just slightly bigger. The low-low is, I think, unrealistic. It's a very worst case. I don't know what would have to happen to make that fall that far. The high-high, I've had some discussions with Sandy, it's certainly not out of the ballpark at all. I mean, it's, it's feasible that that could happen. The, I think if I were to say, one that I think is most likely, you can sort of bet on it, would be the low-K, high migration. And you'll notice in the three projections, not the lowest one, but the other three, you have enrollment increasing until two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and then at two thousand seventeen, eighteen, enrollment starts to go down, and that's because of those births. So, if you, if you get more residential development, you might kind of skate over it. And then, I've taken these projections and configured them as you have students in, in programs and buildings. So, here, what we can see is what happens at the K-5, and then, we see how it slides. First, you have growth in, in middle school and then decline, and then you see consistent growth at the high school level. Then, remember, in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, the kindergarten students of two thousand thirteen, fourteen are in grade ten. So, you can see that, that when you get out in time, it's all based on the assumptions. Now, just do a little recap on the housing because I'm going to do some housing unit projections as well, on, on a method called Housing Starts, where I'm going to look at starts and I'm going to look at turnover. And I just wanted to summarize some things in the report, that housing is like DNA. School enrollment cannot be what housing is not. It becomes a powerful predictor of how many students you will have. And most students come from single-family detached units. That's everywhere in the three states that I have worked, in Minnesota, Wisconsin, and Illinois. They simply come out of single-family detached units. And in this district, it's over, well, over ninety percent of your students are in single-family homes. So, you have almost no rental here at all or anything that come out of these single-family homes. The age of the unit makes a difference. What we've done is, we've overlaid your student body to the tax data of La Sure, Rice, and Scott Counties. And so, we know the year the unit was built makes a difference. And more students, the yield is higher from units built two thousand or later. And that's basically true in all school districts. The newer the unit, the more likely you are to have school-age kids. The sale of existing units does, and that means not newly constructed, of the existing units, does not result in more students for the New Prague Public Schools. Some districts it does, but it doesn't in your case. So, the turnover of units really isn't to your advantage, it's slightly to your disadvantage. The value of the unit makes a difference, that is, what it's estimated market value, that there is a higher yield, that is, more students out of mid-priced units, but interestingly, the most expensive units yield more students per unit than the least expensive units. That's counterintuitive for most people. In many districts, it's the, the most expensive units that yield the most kids. So, the old concept of starter homes and the like really doesn't apply in the twenty-first century. So, again, price point makes a difference here, and a little higher price point yields more kids. And then, thirty-four percent of your single-family detached units have at least one person aged fifty-five and over. That's a pretty low percentage. And so, what I think this really means is that you have more adults in their forties or early fifties as opposed to the fifty-five and up. The highest I've seen in percent is about fifty-two percent of single-family detached units having at least one person, fifty-five and over, it's very high. So, in that sense, you're, you're still, by age, a younger school district. Now, going to go on here and make some elementary building projections. I'm going to base these on the cohort survival, on the high kindergarten, high migration. What I've learned from architects is when you think about facilities, you build for the maximum. When you deal with budgets, you are very conservative. You always think the worst is going to happen. Here, I have your three elementary schools, their two thousand thirteen, fourteen enrollment, and the cohort survival projection for two thousand eighteen, nineteen by building. And we can see, and then I show you the individual school and the district ride, and it's, it's a good match, and they were made independently. The biggest decline at Falcon Ridge. And now, I'm going to look at these housing unit projections. And as I said, I'm projecting a hundred and seventy-five new single-family units, and I'm projecting them occurring thirty-five every year, with fifty in the Eagle View attendance area, seventy-five in Falcon Ridge, and fifty in Raven Stream. And each of these has their own yield, both for new units and turnover of units. And then, just to, to sort of show you that it is the single-family detached units that make a difference, you don't have many townhomes here, but you can see they don't, you have many kids either, so, and that's true in every district. In, from two thousand and ten, January first of two thousand and ten through December thirty-first of two thousand and thirteen, three percent of the Eagle View single-family units turned every year on average, four point three percent in Falcon Ridge, two point eight in Raven Stream. Anything at four or above is a pretty fast rate of turn in this metro area. And then, here, I'm showing you the yields for the New Prague Public Schools, for the non-movers, meaning these are units that were in existence pre-two thousand and ten. That means they were not built between two thousand and ten and two thousand and thirteen. And these are K-5 students now. And you see point three four, so it took about three units in Eagle View to get one elementary student. It takes about five in Falcon Ridge and about four in Raven Stream. And actually, those are fairly healthy yields for existing units. In the old settled parts of the metro, those yields would be down at about zero point one zero. Okay, so, these are still pretty good-sized yields. Now, here's where we see that the units that turned over, and I have the counts there and what the yield was, you just didn't pick up much of any, you lost in Eagle View. Now, when you actually do the math on it, it doesn't make that, but I mean, you're not picking up anything. You got a little bit in Falcon Ridge. But what is eye-boggling here is that in those new units, you're almost getting in Eagle View and Raven Stream, almost one elementary student for every unit. So, that's why those new, and this is true everywhere in the metro. It's true in Wisconsin, it's true in, in Illinois. It's these new units that bring kids. So, that's why keeping an eye on what really happens in those new units is so important because what this tells us is that they really have the potential. Now, I'm going to try to compare these two sets of projections and I need to alert you that it's not easy. First of all, the cohort projections include non-residents. The housing unit projections are for resident only. The housing unit projections are for resident-only. But to further complicate that, not all students attend the elementary area in their attendance area, and that varies by attendance area, and also perhaps the percent of non-residents varies by attendance area. Now, that said, the attendance area projections, the housing unit method are higher. They produce more students. And if the non-residents remain at approximately twelve percent, which is what it was for K-5 most recently, the housing unit method projection would yield one thousand eight hundred eight K-5 students in 2018, 19, which would say no decrease. See? Now, that is assuming that we get new units each of these years, because if they all come, like the last two years, we won't get this kind of impact. And so here we look at what the sum of the school is, which is all students versus the residents only. So we see here that that's giving us a lift, and then if we added the non-residents, you see, we'd pick up. So I'd be happy to answer, yeah, I think that's, yeah, that's the last slide, answer any questions that anyone might have.
A lot of really good information, and interesting how much birth rates have dropped in the past five years.
The recession was really, had a really powerful impact.
Well, I think one of the general statements that you make, or I know I've made, is in the last year, there's been a lot more, or even this year, let's just say, there seems like a lot more houses for sale, but unless it's a new home, you're not getting that yield. So it's the new homes are the key.
New ones are the key.
And if we didn't have open enrollment the last five years, our open enrollment's gone up, has kept increasing the last five years, if we didn't have open enrollment, we'd be in a world of hurt right now.
It's just interesting, because you see permits going up the last two years.
Yeah. The last year, there were thirty units constructed. There are ample numbers of platted lots, okay? And the local officials tell me there are no, nothing's on the drawing board beyond what exists as platted lots. Now, if the housing market picks up, you know, there might be some new, but there, in New Prague itself, I think there's about two hundred and seventy-five something, platted lots. And then, I don't know, I was a little more bullish on development occurring in Lonsdale than probably people are. Elko, New Market, there's a lot to be absorbed there, and, you know, whether the first is going to occur in the Lakeville District before it occurs, you know, all of these things, it's hard to know. I mean, people speculate on something, but if something were to take off, I don't know. But the point I want to leave with you is that the numbers, you know, are showing loss after the first three or four years that elementary will decline. If, four years from now, you can get, nobody thinks it's going to be back to what it once was. But I mean, there are a lot of positive things occurring. There are a lot of jobs planned for Shakopee. We know commuter sheds are what they are. I mean, people don't, Minnesotans don't live next to where they work, that I think there's every reason to think that you will catch some growth.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you so much. It was very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the teacher evaluation, and Tony, I think, is going to talk about that.
Can I ask a question? Twelve-one, it says approve demographic report. Are we?
Graphic report? After we, I guess we need a motion to approve it, Margaret said, so.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the demographic report from, that we received tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Now, it's Tony's turn.
Good evening, Board, and Superintendent Dipburner, once again. Brian Triplet is to my left, and Brian is the president of the New Prague Education Association. And he and I will, in a work session, we had talked about the teacher evaluation once before, and we had set some information ahead. So probably starting back in October, November first, the Education Association, Brian specifically and a number of other people, started to work with Dave Geeson and I and Mr. Dipburner on collaborative effort for teacher evaluation. And that comes to us because of the Department of Education and what the legislation passed last year, two years ago, that a teacher evaluation had to be in place by the start of the 2014, 2015 school year. So a couple of points that we wanted to bring forth before we kind of say why we did what we had to do is that, first of all, the collaborative effort between the union and the school district was phenomenal, and Brian can talk about that at the end here a little bit. But both parts were just very collaborative in nature, which kind of has to do with the teacher evaluation. The PLCs within each of our schools are up and running and in a very positive direction, the professional learning communities that our principals, teachers, and everyone are involved in. And that does have a big part to do with our teacher evaluation, because that's where a lot of the work will be done, is in the teacher groups or the PLC groups. And the PLC groups are with both our continuing contract and probationary teachers. As we speak about the teacher evaluation, it specifically is for the continuing contract teachers, those that have been tenured after their third year, or if they've come from outside a district and have been tenured before, after their first year within the New Prague schools. Just one piece that give a little bit of the nuts and bolts, teachers will have to write two goals. Teachers are currently writing goals now, and Brian could speak to that a little bit better. Teachers are writing goals now, but under the new teacher evaluation, one of the pieces that needed to be completed by teachers is to write a professional growth goal. And that professional growth goal is very specific to the teacher and how they're teaching and their best practices. The second is a student achievement goal, and that has to do with how their students are doing. And we were able to make that a work for all different types of teachers, not just grade-level teachers, but social workers, PE teachers, choir teachers, special ed teachers, some of the teachers that work professionally with the kids, but not in an area that you can really use raw data to see how kids are learning. And then the last piece, besides goal writing, is peer review or observation. Every tenured teacher will peer review and be peer reviewed by one of their peers each year over the first two years. Want to follow a little bit, Brian?
Yeah. So what does the law say? There were certain things that we had to follow as far as the state mandated part of the teacher development goes. And as we went through kind of what was required and what New Prague already does, it was kind of an affirmation that our district really already did a lot of the things that was required by the law. We just kind of had to massage it a little bit and make it work a little better for our district. So it was really good to go through the process of looking at these things and saying, oh, we do that, you know, we have our PLCs in place already. Can we make them better? Yes, of course. And that's kind of what we plan to do here. So obviously, the purpose of this, from the legislative standpoint and the district's standpoint, is to improve student learning and success. And things that have to be included in the plan are having trained observers as peer coaches, or having teachers participate in professional learning communities, which is something that New Prague has really been focusing on the last few years anyway. So we felt really comfortable about that. We had develop, improve, and support qualified teachers and effective teaching practices, and improve student learning and success. So the annual evaluation process for teachers, for probationary teachers, kind of what we already do there, you know, they'll get, probationary teachers will still get observed three times a year for the three years by their administrator. But it has, now we have to establish a three-year professional review cycle for each teacher. That includes the individual growth and development plan, so that kind of relates back to what Tony talked about before, the goal-setting, things like that. Peer review process, and this is one that we spent a lot of time talking about, how do we want to do our peer reviews within the district? Some districts hire people, like a teacher on special assignment, to do, go around, and all they do is peer reviews. I think Bethany Pearson, who used to work in Minneapolis School District, they have thirty-plus people, thirty-plus teachers on special assignment, that all they do is go around and observe. They do the peer reviewing for the district. So that's not the direction that New Prague wanted to go. Financially, we didn't think it made sense for us. Staffing, we didn't think it made sense for us. And really, what we would get out of it as teachers, we didn't feel that made sense either. So what we decided to do is, within our PLCs, for example, I'm at Eagle View, fifth grade, so within our PLCs, we are each responsible for reviewing each other. So rather than having someone come in and do a pre-conference meeting and then observe us and do a post-conference meeting, we'll be able to do it within our PLCs and observe each other while we're teaching throughout the day. Because I've worked with my colleagues at Eagle View for many years, but I've never really gotten the chance to go and watch them teach. I know they're good teachers from what we talk about in our PLCs and what we hear from parents and students and what we see going on from the hallway and things like that, but, you know, I've never gotten a chance to actually sit down in their classroom for an hour and watch them teach and talk about our teachings, so, from that standpoint. So that's something that we're really excited about being able to do. And also, Tony, you want to take this one?
Yes. What does this mean for New Prague? You know, it is a, it's a legislative mandate, and it is coming to us from, you know, the Department of Education, our legislators, but as we were preparing this, we really are very excited about what it's going to bring forth for teachers. The goal-writing, anytime you set goals, you always see growth. Mr. Dipburn has a famous statement that I, he should say it, because I'll mess it up, but, you know, you set goals and you measure what gets measured.
Gets done. Measure what matters.
Gets done. There you go. Measure what matters. And our teachers are already doing those things. Our principals have their teachers setting goals. What this is going to do now is just kind of put a little bit more stake into it for our teachers. This isn't a top-down thing from an administration. This is from our legislation, the Department of Education, and the teachers' union, and that speaks volumes. And Brian will tell us kind of how the vote went here in a little bit, but it means good things. We didn't just go into this saying, this is something we have to do. We put a lot of time and effort into it to make it valuable for our teaching staff. And if it's valuable for our teaching staff, it's going to be valuable for our students.
And we didn't want it just to be a stamped piece of paper saying that we're doing it, if we're going to do it, we wanted it to be something that we're doing well, and that's going to be beneficial for our staff, so.
There are three components that the teachers will be evaluated on, and the first one is they're just teaching practice, their best practices. As they come out of college, they have been trained to be professional teachers, and that is no different, that is no change, and there's a certain percentage on that, but that is where the summative evaluators, the principals, directors, still continue to do their work. It's best practices, they work in their PLCs, and very little changes there. The second component is student engagement, and this is probably one of the newer things. Are our kids engaged with those specific teachers or that teacher? Surveys can be completed, five-minute walkthroughs by principals, archives, or anything that Brian, as a teacher, can show that his students are engaged. Artifacts shows that they're engaged, all cover the second component of student engagement.
And that was another one, just jump in there really quick. That was another one that we spent a lot of time talking about, you know, how do you measure student engagement within a teacher's classroom? Do you just give a survey? Do you just present an artifact? Do you give them both as, you know, an option? Obviously, there are some districts that just have a survey to measure that. We didn't feel that was necessarily the best way to go for our district. We looked at several surveys, you know, the kindergarten surveys have a, you know, a smiley face, a straight face, and a sad face for the questions. And then up towards the high school surveys, they get a little more complex. So we are going to develop some surveys and have them as an option for teachers to put in their portfolio to show that students are engaged, but we wanted to make sure that teachers have the option to present some sort of artifact to show that as well.
And then the third and last component is the student learning and achievement, and this actually statute does require the use of student growth needs to be measured in this area. And that's the piece, that's the data piece, and I kind of spoke to that a little bit earlier. For a third-grade teacher, or Brian, a fifth-grade teacher's got twenty-three, twenty-five students in their class, whether it's MCA data, NWA data, any of the state assessments we give or local assessments, that's much easier to, you know, quantify that. However, what about the special ed teacher, or the physical education teacher, or counselor? How do we know that what they're doing, students are achieving? So that really comes along with some, either, one, building goals, department goals, and/or that individual teacher writes a student achievement goal based upon the specific discipline that they teach in, and then they can therefore measure that, which makes perfect sense. So a physical education teacher can do something in the area of fitness, goals that they have for their kids that is very specific to what it is that they teach. May not, you know, do, have a reading piece to it, although we do want reading across all of our disciplines and curriculum. But we feel very strongly about the direction we're going with this student achievement. We think we've got a real good direction for our teachers. The next steps would be, and I'll let Brian talk about the vote, which happened the last week of school, and then it'll be turned over to the school board for their vote also.
Since it is something that needs to go into our contract, we did have to hold a membership vote by our union, and the vote was overwhelmingly passed. Before we did the vote, Tony and I traveled to each school, and we presented in the mornings to all staff. And we felt it was important, that's something that all staff hear, just so they don't feel like they're blindsided with it when they come back in the fall. So all staff had the opportunity to hear basically the same PowerPoint and same information that we're presenting to you. And, you know, the vote went overwhelmingly yes to approve, and didn't have a lot of questions. I'm sure we'll have some as we go along, but most teachers were very positive about it. You know, they realize that it's some, lots of things that we already do, we're just trying to, you know, get better, and that's what this plan is going to help us do, so.
We did assemble teacher development, or evaluation group this year, and I think I've actually got a number of the people here. We had a lot of teachers help out and administrators too, and we want to thank them all very much for that. I do have, and I'll just show it so the camera can see it, but this is a fifty-seven-page document that is called a Teacher Development and Evaluation Plan that was made up by us. Some of it is from the Department of Education. Some of it, we worked together with the Jordan Public School and other schools, just networked to find out what other people were doing. But in other words, though, then it came down to New Prague's. And this was shown to all of our buildings, so all of our teachers have a very good idea of what is in this, and I know Brian sent it out. This document will be a live document on our new webpage. This document will be a live document on our new webpage, website, when that is up for all of our teachers to have. A lot of the different forms that will be used will be made public for all of our teachers to utilize. So it will be a working document. We will evaluate it after one year, and if changes need to be made, or little revisions, we will make those as part of the group and then make sure we'll let you guys know. We will take questions now, Brian and I. Otherwise, I do have what we would call an agreement between the New Prague Education Association or Teachers Union and then also Independent School District 721 that we would like to sign tonight, so we have that in effect at the start of July 1st in the next school year.
And as you, sorry, as you look at the list here too, we did try to get a really good representative of, you know, primary, intermediate, middle school specialists, high school, departmentalized teachers, media specialist. Tony and Dave were the administrative representatives on, on the committee. Don Vorak was the school board representative. He attended many of our early morning meetings, so he got up early and came for those. And like Tony said at the beginning, this was really a collaborative effort between the Teachers Union and, and the district. And I know that's not always the case in other districts, but I think here in New Prague, we're pretty fortunate that, you know, we're able to work together to come to agreement on these things and get it done, so. I'd like to thank the district for, you know, the collaborative efforts that were shown and put together a good plan, so.
Thank you. Before we go into any questions that the board might have, I just want to mention that that fifty-seven-page document is on the school board minutes for this meeting, if anyone watching the meeting wants to go look through it. Anyone have any questions for?
Just a comment. I, I think you've brought this up through your presentation, and that is the fact that this is not just the work that has to be done, it has a goal, and the goal is to improve student learning and to improve teaching. And those are the reasons for this, and to see it put into play and to have it bear fruit is what we're, what we're after. And I think we've got a very good plan here that hopefully will accomplish both of those things.
Thank you, Danny, and Brian was very nice to give the school credit, but I would like to personally thank him and all of those people that are on this screen for the time. We had three, four, five meetings at seven AM in the morning, and they were there in a very strong force and were nothing but very helpful. So it was a great collaborative effort, and I'd like to thank Brian for that.
And I'd echo that too. The positive leadership from Brian and the rest of the people on the executive board from our Teachers Union, they've been great to work with. I, I said this from the beginning, what I don't want ever, between building and district or between all the people, all of our employees, it's not a we-they relationship, that we're doing it for the, for the good of our kids. So it's all about teaching and learning, and then on top of it, like I told you, you talk about financial integrity. You can get carried away with some of the mandates that come from the state, but we're doing a positive thing that's going to improve student learning, but we're also being, I think, very financially responsible with this. So I'm sure, you know, as we're, as we go through this, we'll, we're going to be tweaking it, but I think it's a very good start.
I'd like to make a comment. Two things that separate this from previous one, and previous ones, there's been about fifteen teacher evaluations over the years that I've been part of one way or another, but we have specifics, more specifics, and we have ownership by the different groups. And I think that that will make this very successful. I don't think it'll be like some of the other ones on the shelf and gathering dust someplace.
Yeah, I'd really like to also thank all the teachers who participated in that group and gave their input because that gives it more potential to be successful. Any other questions? Have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion since I was on the committee. I make a motion to approve the teacher's valuation that was just presented.
Second motion?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Sign it now, I guess.
Get Margaret in there too.
All right, this is good right now. Yes, I'm the superintendent.
Mine's going to be short.
That better be the front page.
Kenzie Neisen and Griffin are.
Sign it again, go over it.
Next, we have the approval of the technology fee.
Yes, thank you. I discussed this at the last workshop, I believe, but what we have to do tonight is the committee that's implementing the one-to-one initiative, the Chromebook Initiative, starting next year in the high school, is proposing a mandatory fee for the use of the Chromebooks for them to be able to take them home. And the proposal is twenty-five dollars per student or ten dollars if they're a free and reduced student, and then a twenty-five dollar deductible per claim. This is pretty typical in districts that have done this. We are also proposing that we self-insure this insurance, this protection fee and have it administered by Gallagher Insurance. I explained the program a little bit later, but parents would go on a website and pay their fee, and then the district will get notified, and then the student can get their, get their Chromebook. Legal requirements to enact this fee was a two-week notice in the newspaper, and that has been complete. And now we are required to hold a public hearing tonight, and then the board can approve. I would recommend that you open a public hearing and close it. I don't know if anybody's here to speak on it or not. Probably not, but I still think we should do the, open a hearing and close it.
So I'd like to open the floor for a public hearing on the technology fee. Does anyone have any comments on the fee?
Well, I think what Sandy brought up was the fact that this is something that's done in other districts. It's done to, to keep the integrity of the, of the equipment up to par, and it's just something that has to go along with the, the cost of doing business with technology.
Yeah.
I'll close the public hearing for the technology fee. I have one other question for you, though, on it. How will the parents be notified? Will they get emailed beforehand, or will it be something that the kids bring home when they come in to fill out, pick up their schedules and things like that?
I think there'll be a couple different ways. I mean, we have a brochure on it that every student will be getting because it outlines the responsibilities of the students and the parents, and so they'll be getting that. And I'm assuming we'll also notify electronically. Tony is here. Tony's on that committee. I am not on that committee.
Mr. Seifert, the high school principal, will send out a letter in the summertime letting them know that we're utilizing this fee, and it will be online, and it will direct them to complete the form online prior to coming in for their schedules. And for those people who maybe missed it or didn't, we'll have forms available and we'll do it the old-fashioned way as they come to pick up their, their Chromebook, but they will not receive one until they've completed this form.
Thank you, Tony. Motion to approve the technology fee?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Next, we have the approval of the facility stadium fees. Janelle is going to talk about that.
Yeah, Janelle, she's done a lot of research and she's talked to people from other school districts that have stadiums that have synthetic turf, and will be, she's going to go over the fee schedule. It's going to be recommendation, it's going to be lower than our neighboring districts, but one that will be able to, be able to pay a supervisor fee and, you know, pay for the costs of, of the usage of the stadium, so we're not losing money on it, and we can keep our stadium in good shape. So, Janelle, you want to take it from here?
Sure. As you might remember, at the May 12th work session, I brought a spreadsheet in that compared information from about twelve different districts. So I looked at large districts like Minnetoka, Apple Valley, and, and as smaller places as Sock Center, and really tried to concentrate mostly on the Prior Lake, Eastern Carver County and Lakeville areas to come up with what our fees, you know, what would be reasonable for us. What we were thinking is that definitely any of the rental kinds of rules and regulations types of things that we already have in place for facilities usage would stay intact with this, and then we would just add a new level of rental prices here. So what we were looking at is for our turf and stadium, the level one, which is everything that's school district related, would have no fee. Level two would be twenty-five dollars an hour, and that is the group that it's community people like soccer associations, things like that. Level three is, we would have it twenty-five dollars an hour also. That's another community group, but more like the scouts and things like that. Level four becomes a group that's making money off of their things, and so like local moneymakers, we were thinking seventy-five dollars an hour for that group. And then level five is your commercial types of people, and we were looking at a hundred twenty-five dollars an hour for that one. It is less than our neighboring people that we looked at. Lakeville, they probably, I don't know, we thought that theirs was kind of interesting, did things a little bit differently. They have a sixty-five dollar consumable fee, and that is just the cost of replacing or paying for upkeep, that kind of thing, so it's called their consumable fee. They charge that in addition to the, the price of a site supervisor. So everybody does have a site supervisor that has to be hired in addition to the rental fee. So we thought we were really quite in keeping and that it would still be able to be used, it would cover the costs, but it wouldn't be exorbitant and the community would be able to afford it. We would have, looking at the site supervisor cost here, about twenty-five dollars an hour. That would be the salary as well as benefits. We also looked at a event supervisor position, so if it was like a big tournament, which was a little bit more than what a site supervisor would have to do as far as responsibilities, we'd look at forty dollars an hour for that. If we needed additional supervision, a twenty-dollar an hour for extra supervisors. And then additional costs, if you needed to use the press box with the light zones, scoreboard, we'd have to have an AV tech for that and pay that cost. If it's a big event and we did custodian, we included that fee in there, which is our going custodial rate. The concession stand, people want to use that, it's a twenty-dollar fee for that. Press box alone, we thought twenty dollars for the evening of that, and then to cover the costs of lights, Craig thought that about ten dollars an hour would cost, would cover the lighting costs. And we know that there are going to be some groups that feel like they really can't afford it, that it's a problem, and we do know that there are grass fields available so that if soccer and, and football groups feel like they can't afford it or they don't have it in their budget, there are grass fields that can be used for no cost at all in the district. Are there any questions about that?
Can I just say one thing? So basically, the, the synthetic turf field usage, the, the number one user will be our youth soccer and youth football teams. And there'll be other ones, but I'm just saying primarily, they're a level-two user, so the, the cost for them will be fifty dollars per hour because it's both the facility fee and the supervisor fee, which is still far less than any of our neighboring districts.
How do you decide whether you need a site supervisor or an event supervisor, or how many supervisory positions you need?
It would depend on the number of people that were expected to be there.
Okay.
So if you're going to have a large tournament, you would definitely have an event supervisor.
And we'll likely have, in soccer and football, not the first year, but thereafter, we'll probably be hosting section or state tournaments there.
I thought you mentioned under site supervisor, there would be benefits. How many hours do you anticipate them working? Or maybe I misunderstood that.
Well, not necessarily benefits, but like FICA and other kinds of.
They would be required a significant amount of time. They'd be working a significant amount of time to achieve those benefits, or how many hours? Do you have any idea? I suppose you would not.
I suppose it's probably made up of different people that do that job.
It's going to depend on what our usage actually is.
Okay.
But we're looking at having John do the, the site supervising, and he is also working in the district in other capacities. So when you add all of his things together, he probably is going to be getting a benefit package.
That's John Shimmens, who has hired his part-time math teacher at the high school. He's also our new strength and conditioning coach, and then he's going to also be basically in charge of the field for scheduling and also supervision.
And that is payment before the event? Do? How would the fee be paid, before the event, after the event?
We would ask for payment before the event, at the time of, of doing the rental agreement.
And then if, if they had, do they get a rain date if it inclement weather, or they had to cancel for other reason other than weather?
If, if they had to cancel because of weather, we would do a, probably a credit. If they just didn't show up or they canceled last minute, then, you know, depending on the situation, we may give a partial refund or perhaps not. And that would have to do too if we had other people that we turned away because somebody had already reserved it. And that's being probably wishful, thinking that we're going to be really, really that busy, but we will be at some point.
Yeah, yeah.
Can our soccer coaches and football coaches run camps there in summer, or is that against the high school league?
No, they can, but they'll, if, when you talk about level user, if they go through community education, they wouldn't pay the rental fee.
They would.
They would, they would not.
Would not.
If they go through community education, they would not. That's a level-one user.
Okay.
Level two is if you're doing your own camp, you're not going through community education. Okay?
Any other questions?
I have a motion to approve the facility use, or the stadium usage fees.
I'll make motion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Sandy is going to present the budget for next year.
This will be a relatively short presentation. There haven't been too many changes since I presented it in May, but there have been a few, so I just want to point those out. And I'm going to be asking for final approval for the preliminary budget tonight. So the changes since the first reading, we've, there's a few staff changes. First, we had a literacy coach resign, so we moved that position to the high school to focus on, as, as a career counselor. And I think you've been aware of this, this move. We added a point-five ECSE special ed teacher, but really that's not an add, that was an open position this last year that we didn't need to fill, but now with our numbers, we do. And we've also added two teachers at Falcon Ridge due to class sizes. And on the flip side, we reduced Title I staff due to the decrease in title funding that I mentioned during the first reading, and that, it decreases expenditures, but it also decreases revenues, so it's a net zero effect. Other changes since the first reading, somehow the attorney fees got, got missed in the first reading, and so I added twenty thousand dollars for attorney's fees. And I'm not changing the revenue. You know, we've always done our budget based on our projected enrollment number. You know, we've always done our budget based on our projected enrollment numbers. And so, even though we think the enrollment numbers are gonna be higher, um, I kept the revenue the same. And obviously, we do a revised budget at, um, at, in December, so for you, for you to approve that. So, for the general fund, the final preliminary budget fund changes, we would expect our, per the budget, we'd expect to go down about a half a million dollars in our unassigned fund balance. But remember, this is only preliminary. Um, there'll be a lot of changes in, in staffing and, um, and enrollment and so forth, so I wouldn't be too concerned about that number. And the general fund total would go down $728,000. A lot of that is severance, which we have set aside. Our special funds, food service, we spec to lose slightly on, um, fund balance. Community services, we expect to gain a little bit next year. Construction, uh, this is our athletic facility, and we expect to be at zero at the end of the year if we spend all our funds. If not, we, um, obviously we'll have some carryover funds for future projects at the stadium. And then our debt service, we still have some, uh, refunding escrow funds that we're holding. The next step really is in October, we should have the audit results. And then in December, you approve a final budget for the year based on actual enrollment, actual staff costs. And I update the five-year projection in preparation for the 15-16 budgeting, uh, which will start in really just a few months, I feel. Um, and what Hazel presented tonight will be very helpful in our enrollment projections. Um, I've always been a little bit concerned about those kindergarten numbers because I knew that, uh, births were decreasing and this, this really gives me some confidence in, in that. So, I'm very grateful that, that we had that done. So, really that, those are the changes since the first one. And, um, the full budget is posted, um, in board docs for you to review if you wish, but I would ask for approval tonight. Questions?
Wanna make a motion to approve the budget?
Make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
I'll second it.
Amended.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Next, we have the approval of the lunch price increase for milk.
I do not see, um, my presentation for that on the laptop, so, um, it's not there. So, if you'd like to follow along in your, um, in your board docs, please. We're basically expecting our food service fund balance to be about $160,000 or so at the end of 13-14. I list our current lunch prices there. The elementary are $240, secondary $255, adult $3.50, and the milk $0.45. Um, I've attached a light, there's also attached, there's a lunch price comparison and a lunch price rate history attached. Um, in the past three years, two of the last three years, we've had to make an adjustment due to the USDA Health and Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010. We do not have to, we don't have a mandated increase this year for, for next year, so that is a, that, that's good. Um, and a recommendation, I worked with Bob Foy before he left, and so he's in support of this. Uh, we will make no change in the student lunch prices, but we'll increase milk, we'd like to increase milk by 50 cent, five cents up to 50 cents. This hasn't been increased in, in seven years, and 50 cents for milk is becoming more common. This does not affect the snack cart milk, um, because that is handling more like our à la carte prices. And then also, we'd like to increase our adult meals by 10 cents. They haven't been increased for seven years either, so I think we've been increasing our lunch rates slowly for our students, and so having a little increase for the adults, I think is, um, is probably due. So, very little change, but, um, I'm asking for your approval tonight.
I make a motion, we approve the, um, milk price increase, even though it's not what it says there. On the agenda, it says, uh, lunch prints increase.
I don't know what the agenda, I guess I don't know what the agenda says.
It's just a misprint.
It's a typo.
Oh, there's a typo, okay.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Next, we have to approve a memorandum of understanding for George Gneeher, the Building and Grounds Coordinator.
Can I ask a question before we do this? Um, why was this in the consent agenda?
This was like the ones we had to approve last meeting for everyone, all the memorandums of understanding. It used to be on that list, but...
Okay.
Yeah, something happened at the last minute that, that we wanted to pull it and just relook at it a little bit, so that's why it's on this month's.
All right.
I'll make the motion to approve the memorandum of, of understanding for Mr. Gneeher.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Property insurance update.
Yes, I just wanted to take a little time to, um, update you on, uh, the first year of our MIST. Uh, if you recall, last year, we joined the MIST pool effective July 1st, and we were one of seven founding members and, um, a new concept in the state of Minnesota. And we, and we had an initial premium savings of about $8,400, but we had higher coverage levels and, and lower deductible as well. We just received our information on a renewal for 14-15, and we received a .8% increase with some increased coverage levels and a slightly higher deductible. The slightly higher deductible, actually, it doesn't matter really because we put money in the pool, and so if we don't pay for it with a deductible, it uses our pool. So, it's really a, kind of a wash. Um, but our insurance company, uh, said that they would keep our rates a little bit lower if we did that. So, um, White Bear Lake is gonna be a new member, um, next week, and we have potentially several more joining. I, I would guess that we're probably gonna have three more joining, and that's, that's very exciting and, um, um, some, some good districts joining the pool. I also wanted to give a brief update on the change, um, on our workers' compensation coverage. Back in 2012, we changed from Riverport to SFM. And our premium, if you remember, was gonna be higher, an additional $32,000 a year, but there were rebates if our claims were low. Our first year rebate for that 12-13 will be approximately $65,000. It'll be calculated and paid in August, and so that would result in a net savings of $33,000 to the district. We're also on track to get a, a bonus for the second year as well, um, which we won't, they won't be calculating actually till a year from now. But, so, I think that has, um, really worked out well for the district. We have, we've had very good workers' comp experience. Now, as far as, um, future workers' comp, we really want, MIST, MIST really would like to become a self-funded pool for workers' compensation as well. And, um, MIST administrators are working with the Department of Commerce to make that happen. We need to have, um, more members, more covered employees before the Department of Commerce will let us do that. But with the addition of White Bear Lake and a few other districts, we're getting much closer. Um, that's really where we would save some money, and I feel really good about that, but that's not gonna happen this year. So, this year, we will renew again on 10-15, and MIST will have an option for an individual plan within the pool, or we have an option of staying with SFM or changing to another carrier as well. So, but that decision doesn't have to be made until October. So, just wanted to give you a quick update on, on our recent insurance changes.
Do we need to approve this, Margaret?
No.
Your report?
No, it's just information, I think.
Just an update.
Any other questions for Sandy on that?
Do you know the other schools that are in it offhand? The districts or...
Yes, um...
I'm just curious.
Oh, I've got them right here. Because I don't have a memory like other people. We have...
That, that's okay, it's not that important.
Oh, here we go, here we go, I gotta... It's, um, us, Eastern Carver County, Winona, Elk River, New London Spicer, ACGC, and Maple Lake.
And they've all been pretty satisfied too, obviously, the way it's worked out.
Very much so. Very much so.
Yeah, saving, obviously, financially, we're saving quite a bit of money. So, positive.
Thank you. Wanna go on to the legislative update?
Yeah, again, this is just a brief, um, Tim wanted me to give a brief update on the legislature and what an impact it had on our district. And these, um, numbers are in our budget, so we just wanted to point them out. We did have, the legislature did have a supplemental budget bill this year, which is very unusual in an off-year, but there was that budget surplus, so they, they did that. Um, they put basically an extra $54 million in E-12 education, uh, made up of several things. $25 per pupil formula increase, which is an additional .4%. And that, for this district, that was $110,000, and that will be reoccurring every year. Um, English language learners, we have a pretty low EL population, but it did result in another $3,600 for our district. Teacher evaluation, there was a one-time $302 per licensed staff FTE for implementing the teacher evaluation system, and that's $81,000 this coming year.
But keep in mind again, one time, so it's not like it's a one-year plan that we're following, but it, it's better than nothing.
Better than nothing, yeah. Uh, school readiness and community ed, we received an additional about $6,000. ECFE, again, in community ed, will receive about an additional $20,000. Um, the school lunch, it fully funds reduced student lunches, which for us is about $6,200, but that will just replace revenue that we would have received from the, from the families. So, it's just a different source for that revenue. So, just wanted to update you real quick on, on how that, how those legislative changes impacted our district. Any questions?
All right, keep going.
And next, we have two...
Oh, wait, I forgot, I forgot one more thing, I'm sorry. The education policy bill, there were a couple of very minor changes, I'm not gonna go into them, except to say the Health Insurance Transparency Act, um, was passed, and this requires districts to seek three bids for health insurance every two years. And one of them has to be PEAP, which is a public insurance employee, public employee insurance program. Um, and those bids must be open in the presence of our, of our largest bargaining unit. And, uh, we're working with our benefits, um, person to decide how we implement that. We are a member of the Service Cooperative right now, so a little bit unsure how that's gonna play, but that's the other major, kind of major change for districts.
Thank you.
Yep.
Denny, you have some resolutions.
Right, I have two, uh, resolutions. And Sandy, could you just give a brief explanation of the resolutions that we'll be considering?
Yes. Um, let's talk about the permanent fund transfer from one to fund four. If you recall, this is the third year we've done this, and the community education unassigned fund balance has been negative. And our auditor, basically when I started, said we need to start doing something with this. The negative is due to, um, early childhood screening costs that aren't covered by state aid, and it accumulated over a number of years. Um, so I'm asking again to commit, or to, excuse me, to transfer $50,000 from fund one to fund four. Uh, really, this should get us pretty close to being even now in the, in that fund balance, in that unassigned fund balance. And then every year, we'd just be required to look at that to see if another transfer was necessary.
And then the other one concerning the severance?
Yes, again, this, um, this is something we've done every year I've been here to assign funds for payment of future severance benefits. And, um, asking for the total amount at the end of this year to be $841,788. And again, this, when you assign funds, you put them aside, um, but by board action, you could also take them out of, out of assigned as well. But they are put away for future severance payments.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a resolution to make a permanent fund transfer from fund zero-one to fund zero-four.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Whereas Minnesota statute allows an independent school district to permanently transfer funds from the general fund to the community services fund for the purpose of covering unreimbursed early childhood screening expenditures, whereas Minnesota State has been insufficient for developmental screening expenditures, and this has contributed to a large unassigned fund balance in fund zero-four. Now therefore, be it resolved by the New Prague Area School Board of Education that New Prague area schools will transfer $50,000 of its unassigned general fund balance to the unassigned community services fund for the school year 13-14. How do you vote on this, Don?
Uh-huh, yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dennis? Yes, item passes. And next, I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution to commit funds for future severance and other post-employment benefit payments.
Moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Whereas the current master agreements with teachers and support staff include a severance or other post-employment benefit provision that represents a significant future liability to the school district, whereas GASB 54 reporting guidelines allow, by school board resolution, a school district to commit unassigned general fund balance to account for future severance and other post-employment benefit liability. Now therefore, be it resolved by the New Prague area school board of education, that the New Prague area schools will commit a portion of the unassigned general fund balance to account for future severance and other post-employment benefit liability to enable better planning for future payments. As it desires, the school board can adjust the amount of money committed for these purposes within the general fund. The board of education committed $837,550 in the general fund for the year 12-13. The New Prague area schools expect to pay $120,762,000 in severance payment during the year 13-14. The board of education commits an additional $125,000 in the general fund for 13-14. The amount total of general fund committed at the end of the 13-14 is $841,788. How do you vote on this resolution, Sherry?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dennis? Yes, item passes.
Last, but certainly not least, this is Margaret's last board meeting. Sorry it had to be a long one, but then you'll be glad you're done taking minutes.
I just wanna say, Margaret, thank you for, uh, sticking on for one last year. My first year, your last year, but I can't thank you enough, um, staying on and helping me through this first year as superintendent. I can't thank you enough, and thank you for such a great job you've done.
I'd like to thank, uh, Margaret also, uh, for putting up with me for one thing. But, uh, over the years, you've done a lot of different things outside of superintendent, that's probably the only job you haven't done, so... Well, I take it back, maybe you did do some of that. Uh, but I'd like to thank you, and, uh, thank you for helping with my little brand kids that come in, and you're, you're just a hero to a lot of people. By the way, I have this letter from Governor Dayton that as of today, uh, no retirements will be allowed in the education field. A lifetime contract must be accepted, no.
Not gonna happen.
Thank you.
Margaret, I bet you thought when I was in ninth grade and you were punching that lunch ticket, we'd have to be here. Well, again, we wouldn't be up here. But anyway, thanks for everything you did, we appreciate it. Um, we do have a gift coming, but I think UPS got stuck somewhere, I know, so that'll come. Thanks.
And I wanna thank you for all your help on the policy committee, I don't know how we'd get through them all without your keeping track of them.
Well, I don't know how we're gonna get through it now. We just said, we're, we're getting nervous. We better have our meeting in August instead of September. Yeah, thanks for all you've done for the district, especially, I love the story they told when, at the last day on that Friday about you being the first woman to work in maternity clothes because you told them you weren't gonna go home and sit there for a couple months before you had your baby. That's just great. And I'm happy that attitude stayed with you the last 35 years, too. But I, I just have a little memory, I remember when I came on, I don't know, five years ago, and I asked Margaret so like confidently, "Can you print me up some business cards?" Do you remember that? And she printed me up five, and I never used them. I still have them. So, thank you, Margaret, for that. I knew if I had you at my side, you were a good right arm man for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret, for all you've done for me and for the district. Uh, I, I have the title of clerk, but, uh, without my clerk secretary here, things would not have gotten done like they have gotten done. I appreciate all the help that you've given me and the school district, and all the kids that you've worked with as well. So, enjoy a great retirement.
And we'll just call you if we have any questions.
After 30 days.
I have, I have one thing to add. Famous people like Elvis and Madonna are known by one name, and if you say Margaret, everybody, everybody in New Prague...
That is very much true. Well, what we're gonna have after we adjourn here, uh, we've got a cake for Margaret, so we'll all stay around for a second and, and enjoy some of that. Okay? Any last words?
Great.
No, thanks, it's been a ride. I can't believe it's been 35 years.
I'm going to miss your stories.
Yes, I have some stories, too.
So, if you have any more, we need, we're going to need some reinforcements.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0.